All right. Good evening, everybody. You're watching the Penfield Planning Board's work session for November 9th, 2017.
Excellent.
First thing we have to do is call the roll.
Hetske?
Here.
Bastian?
Here.
Canauer?
Here.
Tidings?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Nursing her?
Here.
O'Connor?
Here.
All right, Zach, take it away.
All right. Minutes from October 26th were sessioned for the board. Any comments, corrections, concerns noted as we reviewed them and reviewed probably the video that went along with it for those that weren't here.
I have reviewed the meeting minutes and I need to accept.
Good.
Second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Stayed.
Burton?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right.
All right, moving on. Table applications. Item number one of the agenda is no action as there are no updates. Moving on to item number two, the Glenfirth parking expansion. We have received updated plans from the applicant along with their SWIP report. Part of the plans included a landscape plan. I'd like to pull it up on the screen for the board. First time we're seeing this and as we see on the plan, they've provided a row of trees along the what is to be a burned area adjacent to old Brown Crowe Boulevard there that would provide some screening to the parking area as proposed. Staff has sent us our landscape consultant. His initial comments were sent back to us and we have issued those back to the applicant for their review and consideration, but overall, staff is okay with the layout. Our consultant just had a couple of questions about the species that were selected, so we're just waiting for that to come back in. Does the board have any thoughts or would you see any additional plantings that haven't been indicated at this time?
I'm good with the landscaping.
Okay. So up until this point, applicants have been revising the plans per the PRC comments of staff. They've provided those revised plans prior to this set, so staff has been reviewing those and so far, everything has been moving forward. If there's anything remaining, those are technical comments at very best. Does the board have any other questions about this project right now? They are still tabled before the zoning board for an expansion to pre-existing non-conforming use as this board would have to complete its secret review prior to the zoning board making a determination.
Can you take care of that?
We've accepted the agency.
We've done all that.
What's the matter?
I don't see an issue with the board. Moving on that, this. I stand corrected, we have not. Have we? Mike, can you check in the active project folder for EAF? One second.
I was going to add to that discussion. You were talking about rendering a secret determination, I believe. We have not provided you with a review of the archaeological potentials on that side.
That's true. Thank you.
We have not provided to you a statement of finding with regards to the endangered plant species, the dillfoil or whatever it is that grows on the steep slopes around Aranacote Bay. And we also have not provided you with the engineering application review fee. My life would be easier if this board were inclined to, assuming that you're moving towards an approval, pass a resolution requesting that the planning staff draft a resolution for consideration at the next meeting. My client has some concerns about spending the consulting fee for the archaeological and the consulting fee for the Florin Fana and the $2,700 engineering fee without a little more assurance that we're headed towards an approval. He's invested a great deal of money. I've told him numerous times that I thought the process was going very well, that the zoning board looked with favor, the town board has acted on the application, that this board has not indicated to me anything that would be a deal stopper that would prevent this project from moving ahead. He still is uncomfortable and we would be closer to having you be able to render a secret determination at your next meeting if you were considering writing a resolution of approval.
Thank you for that. So based on that, that's where I was going to leave my next point. Typically at this point, the board would give staff direction to begin a draft approval resolution and the necessary secret information following the submittal of those last few items regarding some of the environmental things that have been reviewed. Again, are there any, before we get to that, are there any final thoughts right now with the board regarding this application?
I'm good with it, unless Bob or Bill or something, because I know this isn't good. You're good?
Yeah.
You too?
So tonight, I'm hearing that the board is directing staff to draft an approval resolution for consideration at the December meeting?
Correct.
Yes.
Do I need to make a motion for that?
Yeah, to continue table the application and prepare a resolution.
And submitted, continuing, waiting on submitting documents.
The other documents.
Yep.
Okay. Could you maybe make a motion?
I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
He's.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was staying up for that. Thank you.
He's recusing.
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Okay.
All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Next.
All right. Next application is for the India Community Center Summer Camp regarding their expansion to a existing conditional use permit. Last time the board talked about this was actually at a public hearing on October 12th. Since then, we've received several documentations, staff has had some conversations with the applicant as well, clarifying a few issues for the board. And I'll go over those right now, just building on what was provided to the board in its drop last week. So the applicant provided responses to the board, to the board's tabling resolution, which included kind of their scale or their proposed activities for the camp regarding their request to allow outside groups, non-members or guests of the India Community Center to use the campsite outside of their four-week-long summer camp program that typically takes place during July. That's one of the items that they have requested an expansion to, to that conditional use permit. There are responses that the applicant provided for that item. They have also, Mike, could you pull it up for me? F, where are we? Seventeen, down, 27, correspondence, up, 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 more. And last one. Thank you. Scroll down. Keep going. I need the second one. Ah, the lighting, that was the other option. During the public hearing, the matter of lighting from the site was brought up from one of the adjacent neighbor. And since then, the owners have been in discussion with that neighbor regarding their concerns for the lighting. The issue was that there are three wall-mounted fixtures that on the east face of the building that basically they shine and the light can be seen from his home, which is situated in front of the building. And through their discussions, they have agreed to disable those lights on the building and replace them with LED dark sky compliant lights pole-mounted along the access drive in the front. As I'm describing that, Mike, could you pull up, there's the map, just the aerial. There we go. So, I believe, neighbor, 2175?
Mm-hmm.
So as you can see, the community center facility is located back on the property. Again, the east face is the front of it. The neighbor does have somewhat of a sight, line of sight to it, even if you get through the trees here. They're proposing to take those lights off. They did submit in your package here. There is a photo, kind of rendering proposal of identifying those lights on the building and on the bottom indicating the LEDs that would be mounted and installed along the driveway in the front. In replacement of that, they'd be shining towards the building as opposed to away from it. So they've worked on that and the neighbor was happy to see that and had no other complaints or comments after. So I know that wasn't really part of the review, but it did come up and the applicant did go out of their way to address that public comment and they've captured that with their submission as well.
I have one question.
Sure.
On this drawing, this doorway, I would assume this is an area of public assembly. This button.
Oh, it needs a light over.
It needs to light over for, if it's an exit door, it needs to be lit up. It's so many foot candles and I'm not sure whether proposing the placement of the poles, you'd get the foot candles on that exit door.
Yeah, it's a town fixture.
Yeah, that's probably why it's there to begin with. So I would just run that by Andy or somebody in the code section.
Yep.
Make sure it's okay.
We will do that. Light over the south door that complies with the code.
Yeah, they gotta be able to see to get out.
Yep. Yeah, and that one is facing, that one's facing south. Okay, does the board have any?
Could be a full cutoff though. Could be changed with a full cutoff without that much. It's not a huge expense.
Other than that, is the board supportive of the proposed lighting changes that they've suggested?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you have a question or comment?
I had a question about another point. I didn't realize you weren't through with that.
Oh, no. I got more to go.
Okay, go ahead.
So that's the lighting. So moving forward with this, the board directed staff at the October 12th meeting to prepare a draft approval resolution and to have its attorney review that draft approval resolution prior to this meeting. We have done that. Our attorney came back with some feedback. We've incorporated those changes and have provided the document in its latest form for you this evening. Just a quick recap, 2002 was the original approval of the summer camp program and that included several conditions that the applicant has requested relief from or again, expansion to. The first one is condition F of that approval, which limited the camp to 100 people during its operations. They've requested to increase that number to 150. Based on the code and laws of the state health department, there were comments that were submitted by Lando County Health Department that agree with that number and the fire marshal has reviewed that and has also agreed that 150 is the maximum number of occupants for the camp based on the six cabins that exist today and having 24 bunks in those cabins. So that was one item. The next item, condition E, was that outdoor activities were permitted until 10:00 PM currently. They have requested to extend that to 11:00 PM and the reason for that was it allows them to do more of the cleanup activity, really. They plan to have activities wrapped up by 10:00 for the campers, but it gives them a little more time to get the cleanup done. Also, I want to point out that 11:00 PM is also consistent with the town's code under chapter 250, article 7, section 6 for our noise ordinance. 11 o'clock is the hour listed there, 11:00 PM is listed in that for most, for all of our residential districts, commercial districts, for the most, for our lighter commercial districts. So we comply with that, with their request. The next part is condition B from that resolution where the applicant was limited to the use of the facility by ICC members and guests only. And they have requested to expand that and open the camp up to non-ICC members and groups, consistent with several of the other churches in the town and other organizations that have facilities that people like to use and rent throughout the year. And then the part of that in turn actually would also alter condition D from the original approvals to allow the camp facilities to be used outside of a four-week window. And staff and the attorney have suggested or offered a recommendation to allow that facility to be used between the time of June 1st and August 31st. So that was a lot of information. Does the board have any questions about the application at this time for support or non-support of these expansions?
So it's going to be open to any group now? I mean, after summer camp, obviously that's closed to?
Yes, they're supposed, the Hindu heritage camp is exclusively for their program that they run.
So anybody that wants to rent it out?
It's a nonprofit.
Yeah, they can rent it out now. In the past, they haven't done that, correct?
Correct. They were limited by the conditional use permit that was granted back in 2002.
So it's put them kind of in the same boat as any other church?
Correct.
Because of, you know. Do other churches have restrictions?
They may not have campgrounds necessarily, but they may have other facilities on their property such as sports fields or something else that may allow them to rent out the facilities to other non-members of the group, of the churches.
The only, this gives us no, I don't see a way to revoke it if there's a problem.
We can add it.
Or if we just put in a condition.
Do we have to stay there explicitly or is that just understood that?
I don't know.
It's a conditional use.
That's a question that I have.
Typically, it's understood in a conditional use permit, but if you'd like to add a condition that the board reserves the right to revisit any of these matters at a later date, we can certainly include that line.
Based on some of the things, testimony that we've heard, it may be prudent to include that just as a added statement.
Right, some of those statements were about noise concerns from the neighbors. Complaints were previously filed back in 2015, but to the best of my knowledge, I have not heard of any from this year or past season, but.
Totally agree.
Yep. I know where you're going exactly with it.
Just gives us a.
We've used it in other applications.
Method and vehicle to review it if there is an issue.
And we've used that in other applications for businesses in the town as well, if there was a matter that required further review.
Yeah, we've had that with some of the stables and some of these other.
Mm-hmm.
Let's keep on, if I remember right.
Yeah, I think that that would, I think, satisfy some of our concerns.
Doesn't ever have to be answered. All right, so if we just add that?
As a condition?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm.
You know what's the only problem with the lighting? The other one with the lighting, right? The building, nothing about the parking lots, driveway.
There was one statement about the sign at the road, the position of the lights on the sign, I think.
This was during the public hearing?
Yeah.
From the neighbors?
Yes.
I don't believe that item was discussed further.
Okay.
There is a sign for a road?
It just needs to be repointed back to its original position.
Allison's reminded me that there was just a request to, maybe they'd be out of possession?
Yeah.
Okay. That's something we can follow up.
Just check on.
We can follow that up outside of the resolution, but the staff, we can follow that up.
Okay. Ready to, I think it's something to approve.
EAF first.
All right, somebody else has to move that. authorize me to sign that EAF. Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
All right, so we'll go ahead and move to approve the resolution with the conditions as we discussed.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Canauer?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
One second on that.
Bastian.
Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, Bastian. And that concludes it. The board's approved the application. Staff will be in touch with the final resolution document and get you moving forward with the conditional use permit through the town clerk's office.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right, Empire Boulevard.
Welcome back, board member.
Thanks, Jim. Thanks for coming.
All right. Thank you, Mike. This is the revised one?
Yes.
That's X1. Can you pull up the old one, the approved one, too?
If I must.
A little side by side. So, there you go. All right, perfect. So, we are revisiting the site of 1661 Empire Boulevard. This is the Fantuzzo family brand's corporate location. The board previously approved this project for a office building, repurpose of the existing building in the front and a new residential structure detached at the rear of the property within the limited business district. Site work has commenced on the property, however.
Struggling there, Mike? Yeah, thanks.
Direct there's good.
Figured I'd point it out.
Oh, jeez. Minimize the right window.
Yeah, I think I lost.
The first, there it is. And then drag that guy over to your right. There you go, there you go. Just grab the blue bar and drag it to the right, snap it to the right edge of the screen. There we go. Oh, that's got to. So what has happened is originally the board had approved a site plan that had a driveway access on Empire that existed and was retained and then there was an access onto Rossman Drive along with parking that was approved in the right way by the town board that was incorporating the site plan. Since construction has commenced, on the left side of our screen, we see a slightly modified plan where we have asphalt at the front of the property that was not there originally, along with a new granite curb. And the abandonment of pavement going out to Rossman, Mike, hit that three dot there.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to do.
See those three dots by the percentage?
Yeah.
Hit that. You click on select tool, up, 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 down. There you go. There we go. Now just pan around.
Trail by fire.
Yeah, it's not working.
So.
Pan around.
You need those gun pops up here, don't you?
I do. He's not even.
I offered. So anyways.
Scroll bar.
The window doesn't fit on the screen. If you, if you, hang on, hang on. Take the mouse, grab the blue bar, snap it to the right edge of your monitor, all the way over, all the way over, all the way over.
This one?
Nope, all the way to the right. It'll readjust and let go when you hit the right. There you go. There you go, scroll bar.
Thank you, Zach.
You're welcome. I did it for many years.
That was torture.
I did it for many years. I know what you're going through.
Tell me about it.
So what he just snapped was the original approval and I'm going to highlight the changes. So up here, this is supposed to be grass and on the left is what's out there today. This became pavement. This was the drive out to Rossman. Here's the parking that's there. Parking is installed today and striped. However, construction has ceased here and there's a white vinyl fence out there right now that portions of it have to be removed under the code. They don't comply with setbacks. But as a result, this plan's been modified to try to compensate for lot coverage that was introduced here.
So they're abandoning the residence?
No, that's still there. We're talking about entrance and exit only through Empire Boulevard off of this. And this would be green space to try and match the lot coverage. There's more to this. The issue that we've run into is that when staff calculated the lot coverage on the modified plan, our number exceeded theirs on the plan and the reason for that was they did not include the sidewalk that's currently installed on Empire Boulevard, which I believe is on their, is that on their property, Mike?
It is on their property.
Thank you. It's on their property and the town views that as a hardscape that has to be incorporated in the cogs. They did not run it that way. Therefore, when they go to the zoning board next week for a special permit for signage, they are also going to ask for an interpretation of the code for what lot coverage requires.
Right, does the public sidewalk count towards their lot coverage?
Exactly. That is a matter that they're going to deal with next week. However, we've brought it to the board tonight to get the initial feedback of is the board supportive generally of this modification that's shown on the left versus what was originally approved by the board? How do we feel about?
So on the left, it cuts out the pass-through.
Correct.
Between the two buildings to go out to Rossman Drive, so it forces traffic out onto Empire Boulevard instead of letting them go out on Rossman Drive to Empire Boulevard. Correct.
Correct, and that traffic is likely mostly the residential, but we do have handicap space indicated on this side as well that would be forced to back out and exit the site through Empire Boulevard.
Onto Empire Boulevard. And that's to save, was it one and a half percent green space, two percent?
More like.
By 1.2 percent, right?
Correct.
If I'm, I mean, not for nothing, if I'm the owner, I'd say get rid of the sidewalk and I'll put grass in it. The sidewalk does meet as an owner absolutely no good.
Would have been a period of a previous.
That sidewalk is connected to everything else. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're doing hypothetical.
I totally get that, right? But what good, you know, what, the idea of green space, if I'm not mistaken, and the reason, or one of the reasons that we limit the amount of lot coverage is number one, to have a nice-looking town, but number two, a commercial building owner would cover the entire property because they're looking at that property, I want to make as much money per square foot as I possibly can, right?
It's more than that. The stormwater recharge and it's, you know, plant materials and the environment and, you know, it's other things, but before we get into that, what was, what was the impetus for them performing work inconsistent with the plan that was approved? I'm assuming that you found out by doing an inspection and that they didn't come to you beforehand knowing that their approval resolution obligated them to resubmit if they were going to deviate from the plan. So what do we know about?
Why?
Why they're doing this? And why they didn't come to the town first and say, we'd like to make a change?
To the best of my knowledge, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant and their contractor made decisions in the field without consulting the town first, implemented them while the resources and equipment were on site and made it happen. Their opinion was that this will work better for their site.
That's nice. So, you know, the reason I ask is because I don't think it's fair to ask the board for an opinion and the merits of what was done here without us getting a submittal, full-size plans, record drawings showing what's out there along with the original drawings so that we can make a comparison against the approval resolution and weigh the big picture and not just look at this one little component.
This is.
I'd kick her.
This is their modified site plan based on what was approved.
But is it a record, is it a record drawing? They've already done the work, right?
They have already done the work. It's not entirely, entirely up to date as far as, but it's striping things. When you say they've done the work, they have. When you say they've done the work, they have removed that and that's now?
Well, they never, they stopped work along the back edge of the property.
There's a white vinyl fence right now.
There's a fence out there in Terry.
Nothing behind it.
We talked about this, there's a fence.
And you're right away, it wasn't. Something was up for them.
So yeah, what you see here in the front of the property, even with this curving, this is installed. As Mike said, the only thing that's different from what's out there today is probably the way it's striped.
Yeah, on the south side there.
And the fact that nothing is built again beyond this limit of the property to the west.
But they've got more imperious surface, right?
Yeah, correct, I mean, the whole, the whole back is long.
They've got a greater number of parking spaces.
Yep.
So that's just what appears by looking at a small image.
Right.
I see where you're going. I see where you're going, okay. So I just.
Don't, you want to see?
We should be given an opportunity to do a, a more comprehensive review of the documents.
You'd like to see a, a new.
Like an overlay of what was proposed?
Well, I think that's a very good idea.
That's a good idea.
I, or.
Versus the as-built?
Like a new, I'm thinking more of a new existing conditions.
But if they overlay that onto the plan that was approved.
It's easy for us to see what the changes are. I agree with that.
Yeah. We have to see what their final intent is.
Well, the rationale behind this change, was it because it wasn't gonna work the other way that that was approved and?
I, I can't speak to that. It was a decision that they made on their own without our, without our knowledge and without our consultant.
Without asking what the impact might be. Right, and I don't know if they, well, I don't know if they necessarily thought about that while they were proceeding. They were just thinking, you know, this works better.
So again, we're not looking for a yea or a nay, but I was, we were hoping to see, you know, with the board, is the board somewhere saying we don't like any, we, we want to go back to the way it was approved? Or you see any merits for what their proposal is on the left now that this work has been done and they need to make up for it with new green space here, which requires the removal of the approved driveway and pavement out to Rossman?
My, my vote is to, to table this matter to permit the board adequate time to review the document that we're asking them to produce. You know, the, the two things, two comments I'd like to make. One is this, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than permission. Is, you know, this is the second time this year that this has happened. And it's, you know, I think it's incumbent upon the board to, to, you know, ask applicants to follow the procedure. Not that, not that we, I mean, lots of people come back and say we changed their minds. That's okay. That we, we weigh the merits of the requested change, but to just do it, you know, without engaging their engineer who would for sure have picked up the phone and called Mark and Mike and
Right.
we probably would be having this conversation. So. That's, that's my vote.
Right, this is the second period of time.
And I'll just follow it up too. If, when this goes to the zoning board next week, depending on the outcome of that interpretation, that's gonna affect, it will likely, it will most likely affect the modified plan that you're seeing before you this evening. So I think it's appropriate to table the discussion, but I wanted to, we wanted to bring it to the board to make you aware of what's going on out there. And again, I think, like you said, ask for any additional information to properly review this leading up to the next meeting.
And what's interesting to me, Zach, is that we, we had a lot of dialogue with the applicant about how much parking was necessary, how much traffic that they would get at the business. My recollection is that the applicant downplayed the amount of foot traffic.
Mm-hmm.
They deal with, you know,
Right.
one franchisee at a time, there's a couple employees.
The vendor stopping.
They don't, they don't need all this parking and, you know, they really kinda downplayed that. So it's interesting to me that the change that they made without advanced permission increases the number of spaces.
Yep. They are not, I won't say they are not occupying the building yet at this time.
Right.
So again, everything's still in, that building is still in the remodel phase. No sheevow at this time. But yeah, that a lot has happened in a short amount of time here and that's why we brought it to the board now to address it before it goes any farther.
Thank you.
I'm with you. I mean, if they're gonna make, and that's not an insignificant change.
No, not on that type of a.
Correct.
Space.
Yeah, it changes the whole floor.
Yeah, it does. There's no longer a safer, in my eye, in my mind, going out to Rossman Drive and then to Empire is probably a little bit safer than coming out on a driveway. Now they have two exits in and out.
Cause you have a, well, you have a wider
Yeah.
cut too.
So yeah, I think we need to review it.
So I make a motion that we table and that part of the table and motion includes a request that the applicant give us an existing conditions plan that's overlaid onto the approved site plan. And that the board gets that at least fifteen days in advance of the next hearing that they would like to be on the agenda for. So we meet on December fourteenth.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So we get this.
End of November.
End of November, twenty-ninth.
Yep.
And then we got a couple of weeks to look it over and.
If we have it, we will provide it. Okay?
I see.
All right, thank you.
Moved and seconded.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
Last item. Just being a minute. We have a request from the new owners of fourteen twenty-nine Shoe Craft Road. This is an application the board heard in two thousand sixteen for a three-lot subdivision. There was an existing home on the property proposing two new lots and two single-family homes on it. PB miscellaneous, you're on it?
Yeah.
Bottom, almost bottom. And go, that one works. They recognize this right near Garden Hill, South Plank. Yep, not long ago at all. Uh, they have bought all three, the, the properties were subdivided by, by the applicant at the time. The new owners bought as all three parcels and are requesting to merge them back together. The only thing that staff would have to do is a follow-up to this is abandon the stormwater inspection and access easement at the northwest corner of the property that was filed following the approvals. Sidewalk easement was filed along Shoe Craft Road, that would stay in place as well as Garden Hill. That's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Simple three to one, kinda undoing what was done by the board through site plan and subdivision approval.
Anybody have a problem?
No.
Somebody wanna move?
I'll move. I'll second.
Hetske?
Aye.
Bastian?
Aye.
Burton?
Aye.
Knower?
Aye.
Tidings?
Aye.
All right, any else?
With that, that concludes everything I have for the board.
Okay, anybody else have any new, old business that wanna bring up?
I think we should, uh.
Well, I think we're all a jerk.
I think we should develop a, a game plan for our holiday party.
All right, we are a jerk. Have a great Thanksgiving.